I move to resume the work session.
Second.
Proper move to second, in discussion, all those in favor? Alright, that passes, you guys are first, next item.
Next item on the work session agenda. Is the F-20 Department Budget Presentation City Manager.
Is the budget the city manager or is it Mr. Malawi?
City Manager.
City Manager back there. Mr. City Manager, you're on for the budget.
Remember, that's not be as the department, so the first department is police.
Are we calling each department?
Uh, not each, because of the lack of time, we have three that are prepared, but we know that you wanted to hear from public safety in depth, so we have police first, and if we don't make it through any of the others, we'll defer until the 27th. Or another time that council sees fit.
So, excuse me, with clarification, ma'am, Mr. Mayor? So tonight, we have three departments here, is that what you just said, Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Okay, and at three, the next time?
Well, so, I think we've been trying to figure out, um, what the schedule is, and so all of our departments are prepared, but we actually need some guidance on what days, uh, are available. I don't believe that for the level that you would like these presentations to come at, the work sessions on the 27th and, uh, today are enough, and so we'll need some guidance for that. I think the, uh, city treasurer is looking at, uh, petitioning some additional time, but I'll defer to them to discuss that.
What if we start at seven, start at five o'clock, or do we start at four o'clock? When do we start at four o'clock?
I would say it likely, if it was the 27th, it would likely have to be two o'clock. If, if you think about it, you have three today. I don't believe with the aggressive agenda we have, you will, uh, go through all of them, and so that means you've got eleven total departments that you want to hear from, not including, uh, the clerk's office, uh, and, you know, and others. So, you know, I'd say two o'clock is more likely, or you can defer to do something different, and again, I'll defer to the CFO to give insight.
So, Colleen, I think this, uh, these budget presentations are, and I would want to, anytime, Mr. Donald, to, uh, we press so much for time, that the president may have to leave something off, and so what we have to make, how can we spend this time to get a full budget presentation from everybody?
I'm gonna mean a vote to, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna mean a vote to start, uh, so we, you know, won't have to pick another day to come here, I mean, we'll start at two o'clock on the 27th, um, since we have a council meeting, um, that day anyway.
That's a suggestion. Mr. Colleen? I'm not available, I'm gonna tell myself, be careful, anybody's like, two of us not available, three, that's fine.
That's a council meeting.
I'll, uh, I'll be attending George downtown, and then I'll be helping out. I, I, and I do want to say for the record, um, I have told this to both the city manager and the CFO a few weeks ago, and for several weeks I have been asking for a calendar for our budget units, even at our last council meeting, I talked about all of these obligatory board meetings and things that we had, and I've been asking for this calendar meeting yet to receive this.
Our bigger, now that I know, we've got a bigger issue, and we got four council people on video that day. Mr. Malawi, you want to make a suggestion?
So if we have to have the, start from four o'clock on 27th, it will not be enough time to have all the departments.
Okay, so let's do this, Mr. President, uh, Mayor, if four people are not going to be here on the 27th, would that mean we will have, so we can substitute that meeting, Mr. Colleen, for a, a time to hear all of them, as some, some day, maybe the day afterwards or two days after?
I'm, I'm available all next week.
Maybe that's, Mr. Donald, maybe that's what we have to do to get the full presentations.
I think we're, we're available and, and willing to work. I would defer, I know that the clerk deals with all you guys and schedules those meetings, and so, you know, I think I would, you know, defer to them to make that decision, uh, or, or assist you in coordinating a new date or whatever process you need to go by.
Madam Clerk, you want to say something?
Um, next week is all my time, Monday through Friday, from eight till four, so we will not, it's gonna be kinda hard, uh, to meet Monday next week.
Well, uh, he needs to back up and write the name, then. I ain't trying to be funny, but we just need to get through this, this, it looks like we're not gonna have another meeting on Friday, that's what it looks like, alright? Uh, so we have to go to next week to get some full presentations. So you're saying that your officers couldn't be there?
One of us will be there.
There you go. Alright. What do you think about that? You know, we just pick a day next week. Uh, I, I would urge that we go ahead and pick it now.
Yes, absolutely, give us a guess.
Tuesday, we meet on Tuesdays.
We already have something Tuesday. Let me tell you what it is, I got a, um, meeting request.
Okay, now we gotta spend an hour trying to find this, this is why.
To meet Wednesday?
Okay, I can do Tuesday, next Tuesday.
I'd like to make a motion to meet Wednesday, okay?
What time?
Wednesday, would it be at two o'clock? Wednesday at two o'clock?
We can make city manager say.
We can make city.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first?
That's August, that's Wednesday, August the 21st.
Alright, that's one suggestion, Wednesday, August 21st?
Alright, we got three Fridays.
I got three Fridays, I'm ready, can I get a four? Alright, we got four Fridays.
I, I, um.
We got four Fridays.
I would, I would like to make, uh, another suggestion for Tuesday, obviously.
A second.
Alright, proper move to second, Tuesday, August 21st. All in favor, all in favor, go ahead.
You said you could do Tuesday.
All in favor, uh, what's the date again?
Tuesday, August 21st.
Tuesday, August 21st.
Two o'clock.
Well, I wanna ask how many hours do we need, because we're going to have to have a budget hearing and a meeting, is that right?
I can't do it until two, cause I got my ride along, I'm being, um, definitely gonna be too.
So, so I'm saying, if we start at two, we have the council meeting that will be probably five hours. Alright, say, the council meeting will probably be five hours, is the second, it's the, it's the, is that the second or the, the fourth Tuesday?
August 21st will be the third Tuesday?
It will be the third Tuesday, which means we will have zoning cases, right?
No, that's the 27th is our next council meeting.
We're not having it on the 27th. That's what we're saying.
No, excuse me, what we're saying is on that next meeting, we're possibly not gonna have four, alright? So I'm trying to substitute that meeting for a meeting to hear the budget.
So we're going, but, but we would hear the, would we hear the budget and have a regular meeting, which includes zoning items?
What day?
On the, on the 20th.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're gonna take that date and.
We're moving the 27th meeting.
And still have the budget, I see what you're saying, go ahead.
So, so we could not coordinate those extra activities within less than a week's time, the zoning hearings and all, because we normally wouldn't deliver those until the 20th, and then the clerk and them were coordinated and posted, so those type of activities would be different. What may, we've also already posted the actual budget hearing, so I think what, what may be a good idea is to split the meetings and have on the 20th, a special call meeting, so that all of the council could hear the budget and the different departments, and if they're eight of you, and so if you have four left on the 27th, you could still do a minimal amount of business, we would just have to have a shorter agenda. You don't have, you don't have four on the 27th.
We would not have four.
Well, then, it, still, you would have to, so let's say eliminate the 27th, you're still looking at another special call meeting. So, is it postponing the 27th meeting for a few days, so that you can still conduct business, and then instituting this 20th meeting, so that you can hear all of the decisions before the budget, because you want to keep in mind, and I, and again, I have to defer to the treasurer, cause he has the calendar and the dates, but I think you have to pass the budget by the 10th, and so versus spreading it out, I think the easiest thing you might be able to do is the 20th for your budget review, and then another date a few days later, or earlier on the 27th, to be able to conduct the city's business.
Okay, Mr. Donald?
I was gonna say, the training, um, the training runs through Friday at noon, so it's that week, it's a week-long training.
So, so, um. My, I, I, I wonder, it sounds like we can't have the meeting on the 27th, so let's just table that for a minute. We have nine departments, right?
Technically, yes, did, we, yes.
I'm just asking, if we give an hour to each department, that's nine hours. Are we doing thirty minutes for each department? Like, like, let's be, let's, let's be honest about how long it's gonna take to hear all of the departments?
So, I, I think we defer to the council on that. Each department, I believe, has about three to five slides of just pre-delivered information, but they have set up their presentations to receive questions from the council on what areas in the budget interest them, and so I'm sure for some departments, which are fairly small, like communications, it may be fifteen minutes. Those that are large, like, uh, police and fire and those others, you know, I'd imagine is, is longer, and so I, again, we have to defer to your guidance for that.
That's what I was saying, is substitute the meetings for the budget. I mean, I don't think we can do both. I got two, so if we start at two.
Yeah.
And maybe we'll, we'll be out by ten. I just think we need to do that. All we need now is a date that everybody can.
The 20th, the 20th.
20th, if everybody's okay. Got it?
I mean, do we, I, I, I'm asking, does that work for everyone?
It doesn't, but, like I pointed out, we've got invites about the strategic plan for that consultant for that day, I don't know if other people have gotten those.
I did, I didn't look like it. I'm cracking it, we'll move forward.
It will be, oh, if you have a hearing dependent on if this, this one, this location is available on the 20th, and secondly, only hearings have been advertised for the 27th.
Well, we have, we, we have a certain amount of time in the council room, public hearing done, from the public here. We have like forty-eight hours that we can cancel on each?
So if you cancel, if you cancel that one, you have also to cancel the, the 10th. The 10th and adoption, you have to put another one, one week after the 10th. So adoption will not be on the 10th, should be.
Let me say this here, we can rustle around all night, but we won't. Uh, I feel that we need to have a meeting on the budget. If the 20th is a date that most people can be in, you need four, then let's go with the 20th. So, all, who's, who's gonna be up for the 20th?
At two o'clock.
At two o'clock, that's it. Yeah, we go. Okay, so what we'll do, Mr.? Uh, Mr. Mayor? If we get this missed with that, this part of the agenda, wait to that date. Is that alright with you?
Oh, absolutely, that's why I hope we'll do it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Madam Clerk?
You need to adjourn the work session.
I entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
I move to adjourn the work session, second.
The proper move to second, all those in favor? That passes, Madam Clerk?
We need a minute to change the computer over.
Okay.
You can go ahead.
You can go ahead, you can go ahead, call the board.
I want to thank you all for coming to the regular agenda meeting for the city of South Fulton, uh, Madam Clerk, if you do the roll call for me.
Roll call. For August thirteenth, regular meeting minutes, seven AM. Councilmember Catherine Law.
Present.
Councilmember Gons.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gill Yard.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Colleen.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also present is Mayor Bill Edwards, the city attorney, Amelia Walker, and the city manager, Oyoda, Odie Donald.
Thank you so much. Alright, this time, we will have invocation by Pastor Henry. It's all about the pledge of allegiance. For those of you that don't mind standing with us for prayer, you please stand. Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we do come with an attitude of gratitude, we are thankful for the direction that our city is going, we thank you for every department, we thank you for our leadership of God, our mayor and our city council. Your wisdom is always in this place and always shows up in my heart. So as we conduct the matter of the business for this city, let your wisdom fall afresh upon us, and let us be on one accord, as we pray, let us all say, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Presentation and announcement. The first in the proclamation presented to intern Kayla Robinson, was to interns Kayla Robinson and Jared Jones, Councilmember Willis.
Can I have Jared Jones and Kayla Robinson? These were my two summer interns, and it was a pleasure to have them, they really worked hard, and some, uh, both of them are college students who will be leaving us next week to go, to return back to college. Kayla, she worked with me on a lot of the communication and graphics and marketing, and Jared worked with me, um, on my policy and research, and so I want to give an proclamation honoring them for their hard work, and, um, a small token for them to, uh, for them to go back to college. I also want to thank our attorney, um, Amelia Walker, for giving them a scholarship as well, she gave them a scholarship, um, we had a luncheon with them, and, um, she surprised them with a scholarship, so, uh, they should be returning back to school, um, in a good position. Um, this is a fellowship program that the city of South Fulton has, and it is, uh, no compensation, and so for them to be surprised with a scholarship, I think was a wonderful surprise to them, so.
Kayla?
Whereas the city of South Fulton Fellows is a city, is a city's internship program, South Fulton Fellows supports internships with the city of South Fulton that provide growth and learning opportunities for full-time college and university students. South Fulton Fellows internships are educational opportunities for students and assist students interns in achieving their educational goals by giving them an opportunity to augment their classroom instruction with exposure to real-world settings. Kayla D. Robinson began the city of South Fulton internship program on June 11th, 2019. Kayla Robinson, a rising junior at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, where she is on the dean's list and majoring in business marketing. Kayla is a marketing major, her experience this summer included graphic design, social media graphics, and designing newsletters. Kayla will be able to utilize these skills learned during the internship to further develop her entrepreneurial endeavors. Whereas Kayla Robinson plans on becoming a marketing manager for a cosmetic or luxury brand, we're so happy she was selected to be one of the first interns in the city of South Fulton, uh, council department for the city of South Fulton Fellows internship program. Now, there it be resolved, the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton congratulates Kayla Robinson on her service and contributions to the city of South Fulton, and thus hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 13th, Kayla D. Robinson Day in the city of South Fulton. One thing I would like to add, she is, when she returns to school, she's actually gonna study abroad next summer.
Alright.
Thank you, everybody, so much. This was such a welcoming program, as soon as I started. Um, I just want to thank Councilwoman Willis for being so open to my new ideas and things like that, and Ms. Lashandra Little for helping me every separate way, and just thank you, everybody, for being so nice.
So next we have Mr. Jared Jones, whereas Jared Jones began the city of South Fulton internship program on June 11th, 2019. Jared is a rising sophomore at Brown University, where he is majoring in political science and public policy. Jared Jones plans to become a lawyer and work in the government with aspirations of becoming an elected official. His experiences include researching policies to create ordinances, as well as attending networking and community events. Jared will be able to utilize skills learned during the internship to further, to further develop his interest in law and government. Whereas Jared Jones is passionate about government, policy, with interest in criminal justice, immigration, and education reform. We're so happy Jared was selected to be one of the first interns in the city of South Fulton council department for the city of South Fulton fellowship internship program. Now, there it be resolved, the mayor and the council of the city of South Fulton congratulates Jared on his service and contributions to the city of South Fulton, and thus hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 13th, Jared Jones' Day in the city of South Fulton.
Thank you, everyone. Um, thank you to the Councilwoman Willis, thank you to Mayor Edwards and Ms. Lashandra for such a wonderful experience, um, researching policy, researching city governments, uh, researching organization, building city structures. I really learned a lot, and this would have to be, uh, a fundamental, um, mark as I continue on this journey. Thank you.
Mayor Willis, uh, presentation to the mayor, um, he, uh, awesome research of the cities and instruction, presenting his presentation to the mayor.
Jared did a wonderful job, let's give him a name. Mayor presented a presentation, y'all, and I went drift that day. He came in a suit tie, to make me look bad. He had an excellent presentation, and you learned from the presentation, we learned from you, but thank you for your help.
I want you to put this on your dormitory wall.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One. One, two, and three.
Thank you, parents.
Thank you so much. Next, the proclamation to Detective Sergeant David Teeger.
Teeger, come on up, you ready? Now, the, the Texas team got a few of these propromissions, but before we have Willis' time, we gotta give it back, so we gotta pray. And, and I have to give everybody signatures before I do it, okay? I want to make sure that the whole council are saying the proclamation. Alright, everybody here? Roll, come on, roll on.
We needed Rolanda.
Y'all don't know Roll, roll that roll on.
Oh, my God.
Roll, council, if you. Listen, it's, it's, it's my pleasures, I got to meet, uh, Mr. Teeger at a meeting with me and the mayor, and, uh, yeah, I called him, maybe. Me and the chief, and, uh, we were talking about issues that pertain to crime, and I just know what he did, and man, this is an excellent interview that we have in our home, this process. I bet you everybody around here seen a lot of movies, but you ain't seen this one. And I will tell you why in a bit. Let me read this proclamation. Detective Sergeant David Teeger blessed began his following force in career with the Atlanta Police Department on September 2011. Whereas he was placed in the heart of the community as zone three precinct, and served the utmost, with utmost distinction, until promotion to patrol and later the crimes suppression unit, where he served for four years. In 2016, David started, Detective Sergeant Teeger decided to expand his horizons and join the ranks of the public police department, where he was assigned to the duty of the gang unit. During this move, he was charged with the task of investigating crimes committed throughout Metro Atlanta involving gang members. Because of this dedication, hard work, and the minimal success he achieved, Detective Sergeant Teeger was awarded the outstanding citizenship, citizenship award by the state of Georgia. Let's give him, uh, our hand for that. Recognizing that with broken chains, in 2018, Detective Sergeant Teeger was given and accepted the opportunity to serve with the newly formed city of South Fulton Police Department as sergeant of the gang unit. His record continued to speak for itself. Detective Sergeant Teeger's commitment, devotion, and continued progress towards eradicating gangs in Georgia, afforded him the opportunity to, yet again, be recognized for his duty to serve, and was awarded the Jose Diaz Gang Investigator of the Year by the Georgia Gang Investigators Society in 2011. Now, several years after, that the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton recognized Detective Sergeant Teeger for his fellow example of moral devotion and allegiance to this profession, and just hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, as Detective Sergeant David Teeger Day in the city of South Fulton, and this is signed by the entire. And this is signed by the entire, the mayor and council of the City of South Fulton.
Thank you very much. I want to first, uh, thank my wife, uh, my family, my team, especially the Alpran, Vance, and the Cannon guys who were able to be here, but without them, I wouldn't be able to do this, and more importantly, to Chief Meadows, who, uh, entrusted me in this vision to come out and actually deliver what he saw for the City of South Fulton, and that's a belief in me to come out and do something big, and I just hope to continue to, uh, to deliver what he, uh, asked me to do. So, thank you very much, Chief. I really appreciate it.
You know, it's funny, um, I watched David. I actually retired from Atlanta. Most of you all know that. He used to be in Atlanta, he was with me in College Park, and now he's here. Um, what he did tell you was that he had one investigation that spanned twenty-eight different jurisdictions, this, this past year. Uh, he's organized an educational campaign centered around educating police departments throughout the state of Georgia on gang awareness and trying to help, um, deter kids from that. It was one of the things happening in Cleveland, we talked about earlier, we mentioned. And that's huge. He, he, he not only put together our gang program, but it was a three-tier, uh, system, and the biggest part of that was educating our young people and trying to steer them away from gangs. When we look at the fact that we're investigating over two hundred gangs throughout the Atlanta metropolitan area, that's scary. And, uh, David has done his, his due diligence in terms of trying to help steer young folks away from that life, and I, for one, am very proud of you, David, for everything that you've accomplished, and looking forward to many more years of service at South Fulton.
Alright.
I remember you and I can appreciate you for all that you've done.
You got it.
I got you, ma'am.
I meant you that, too.
You did. I, I don't know what to say. Today is, is all about my husband, and, um, I, I'm just very, very thankful for who he is able to work under. I met Chief Meadows a couple of times. Um, he, he has a wife, and he called me at ten nineteen AM and told me I had until eleven thirty to be ready. So, um, yeah, he put a lot of pressure on me. And I showed up, too. And I, I was okay. It was a surprise, my husband. And, um, every day that he gets up and he goes to work, I know that he is going to be taken care of, and I know that he is going to do the best job possible, and I know that he's going to come home and want peace to his family. So, he has, um, our full support, and I, I couldn't have been better with anybody better. I'm so proud of you.
David, read this. You wanna say a couple of things?
That's his mom. She's a retired police officer.
Yeah, I'm retired. I'm very proud of my son as a human being, and the fact that he's able to, uh, execute a lot of things that I have taught him, Rolando, in terms of how to treat people, how to be a good human being. I'm very, very proud of him. And I love the fact that he's working with one of the chief members, and he's able to grow. And I love you. Proud of you.
Rolando, proud of you.
Thank y'all. So, let's give another round of applause. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna give you this, okay? Alright? Thank y'all so much.
Yes. Come on, there, mama, where you at?
Come on, mom.
Come on.
Turn around.
I'm sorry. I don't wanna be like that. Come on, mom. Come on, let her mom.
Yes.
Mark, get it closer.
Alright, one, two, three. Here we go. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Hold on. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
You don't like the chief.
Now you know.
Nobody likes their boss.
Everybody likes their boss.
I know. Okay, okay. Okay. There we go.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of council agenda. Are there any, uh, changes?
Yes. I would like to add the, uh, the approval, um, to vote on the bear cat for city manager to approve the, uh, purchase of the bear cat.
Probably move the second.
I'm sorry. You wanna add the bear cat to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes?
Yes. Um, the, um, the Perez planning and design, I would like to take it off the conservative.
I'm sorry.
The, uh, Perez, um, uh, design and plan, I would like to take it off the, uh, and attend it and put it on the.
Anything else?
Is that it? Go ahead.
For administration, I understand, is missing changes to the finance department. The attorney must incorporate those changes. And so, so, um, the first, our next regular is getting one.
So you're pulling something off?
Yes.
The, okay. Did you get that medal, Bert?
Pulling item twenty-one, and you, we need to also add, uh, an item about voting to change the August twenty-seventh meeting, so they have an official vote. So the changes to the agenda is adding approval of a bear cat vehicle, moving item number fifteen from consent to the regular agenda, pulling item number twenty-one to the next meeting, and adding the August twenty-seventh meeting. Yeah, adding the items to cancel the August twenty-seventh meeting. Any other changes?
I recognize Mr. Colleen.
Here's, there's, uh, my nomination for the Finance Committee, Ms. Baldwin McGee, just missing the full tab, uh, number twelve.
Say that again, I hear you.
My nomination for the Finance Committee, Ms. Baldwin McGee, for District Six, is just a couple of seconds.
I have to ask you.
What did you have to say?
Um, I also have an appointee for the Finance Committee. Um, that would be Kathy Adams for District Two. I sent over the information today.
You have those two additions, Madam Bert.
Okay. The changes to the agenda. Add approval for the bear cat. Yes, it's being added to the regular agenda. These are the items to change the agenda. Adding item to, for approval of the bear cat vehicle, an item to vote to cancel the August twenty-seventh meeting, move item number fifteen from the consent to the regular agenda, and adding the two additional people for the Finance Committee, Ms. McGee and Ms. Adams.
Okay.
And pulling count, uh, item number twenty-one from the agenda to the record of next scheduled meeting.
Alright.
You just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. All those in favor? That passes, Madam Bert.
Next. Next item is approval of city council meetings. The first one is July twenty-third, council minutes, meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Probably move the second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, Madam Bert.
The next is the special call meeting for August first at twenty, uh, at ten AM.
I make a motion to approve the special call meeting minutes for August first, two thousand nineteen, at ten AM.
Second. Probably move the second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, Madam Bert.
And council approval of special call meeting minutes, August first, six PM.
I make a motion to approve special call meeting for August the first, two thousand nineteen, at six PM.
Move the second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, Madam Bert.
The next item is council reconsideration of URA resolution, establishing needs, area, and improvement plan as a public hearing. Councilwoman Wilson-Baker.
Miss ma'am?
Yes.
I would like to make sure, uh, I know when this was done, I was about to add, uh, the District Seven area to that. I think, uh, uh, the city attorney has the information.
Yes, that's it. So I have to add?
Specify.
So I, I have to add an language that covers, um, the page of the Boulevard.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, it's, it's in the current.
So, let me understand what we doing here, for the city public hearing.
Well, there's no, there's no action. I can't stand that.
The city attorney sent it to us as a public hearing. So, ma'am, you'll, you'll just need to have a public hearing on the URA plan, so the public can comment, give their feedback, for it against.
Okay, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on the URA plan. Are those who are far in here, please come to the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I, I don't even. I don't think the public knows what the URA is. So, uh, I think, uh, if, if, if for clarification to the public and, and the recording, um, can Attorney Walker give a full explanation of what the URA is?
Okay, I, I'll accept that. Attorney Walker, you go to the next.
So the URA stands for Urban Redevelopment Authority. It is a entity that was created by the mayor and council um, a couple of meetings back to work on capital projects and improvements within the city. The mayor and council at the, um, with their resolution that created the URA, they declared the necessity, for one. Um, they gave instruction for notice to go out to the public that a URA plan was coming back before the council, and that's where we are today. That notice was published in the Fulton Daily Report, and if you look at the agenda or on your phone, you have the cop, you have access to an electronic copy, the, a copy of the URA plan is within the agenda. Essentially, it lists projects that the council has isolated and prioritized for purposes of utilizing financing and related, um, bond-type financing for these projects. A capital project is one where the city, city infrastructure will be benefited by the use of those funds. Um, examples include recreation improvements, and actually, I'll give you examples, I'll give you items that are within the current plan. Um, the council plans to have multiple improvements to recreation centers throughout the city that include Sandtown, um, Woke Mall Park, the south, I mean, the tennis courts and facilities. There are proposed new recreation centers on Old Bill Cook, on Oakley Industrial Boulevard, as well as Wilkerson Mill Road. There are improvements to fire stations and just other things, other infrastructure or areas around the city where there is a, um, substantial need for, for this type of activity. If the council approves the URA plan tonight, then that will authorize myself, administration, as well as finance to work with bonding and financing officials to secure the funding. The council will then meet as the URA, and they will establish a priority for which of these projects are going to initiate, uh, in the near future. So, we're hoping that tonight, we can either set a URA meeting, or at the next council meeting, we can set a date for their URA meeting. And hopefully, um, if everything goes well, and so far, the plan has, um, been flawless, the, the mayor and council have worked diligently with giving us information to help us put this plan in place. Um, if everything goes according to plan, you should see, um, a lot of this work initiate within the coming weeks and months.
Okay, the floor to open for a public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council. Glenda Collins, fellow one. Uh, my question to you is, how much money is involved, and will it be, this, how will it be dispersed? And I understand that this is needed for gliding property, among many other things. So, I agree with this, uh, moving forward on this project. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll go to a public hearing. Why do you wanna answer that question? Have that, ask that question before we move forward. You want the question, Thomas, might as well.
So the URA funding will, is going to fund the capital projects that are in twenty nineteen as well as in twenty twenty. In twenty nineteen, the, uh, capital projects have already been identified, and the council adopted those capital projects during the media budget amendment in May. And for the twenty twenty capital projects, that is, is the budget that you are all asked to come and participate. You see all those capital projects in the twenty twenty budget. And that is, the first meeting will be, the presentation will be, uh, on the twentieth of August, and there will be another one. And we are likely to have the adoption of the budget by the seventeenth. Now, it was initially on the tenth, but with the change of the twenty-seventh, we are likely to have the final adoption on the, uh, seventeenth or somewhere else there. So you have the time to see what the, this money will be funding for. Different projects that have been, are managed there, and you will see there throughout the city.
Ms. Malazia, I think that they didn't ask you in another way.
Yes, sir.
I think she was getting it. What, what account of money are we looking at right now, potentially, uh, to approve?
So, with the potential that we have, we can borrow money up to twenty million dollars. We are not going to, that twenty million dollars, you can go up to fifteen. So in the twenty nineteen capital projects, there is a need for five point three million dollars. And for twenty twenty proposed budget, there is a need of capital projects up to eleven point one million dollars. So that's the money we are talking about.
You are combining sixteen million.
Sixteen million.
That's the word that she figured she's looking for.
Yeah, we already have, uh, uh, out of that, we already have four hundred million dollars, uh, four hundred thousand. So it's less than that, about four, uh, fifteen point six million dollars.
Alright. She asked me to leave them. Just, just, where is the traffic?
Um, I, I'm gonna answer the attorney. Is the, um, property for a city of Georgia included in the map?
So your map will be amended to reflect the final project list that you adopt tonight. So as long as you include the property on this project list, it will be reflected on the map.
Okay, so I just wanna know, because I don't, I'm looking at the map, and I don't see the. Okay, so I just wanna know, because I don't, I'm looking at the map and I don't speak English.
Well, I wouldn't pay attention to the map, because the project list, the map needs to be adjusted to match the project.
Okay, uh, Ms. Glee, go ahead.
Um, sorry, I just didn't. The, um, when we approve the meeting, I would ask, if possible, if we could publish the list of projects. I think the constituents would really appreciate seeing the list of, also appreciate the projects that we're doing. Um, I do wanna say, I just wanna take a moment and say that I'm very proud of this council. I know, um, I know we've had our ups and downs, but I, I believe, and I was just telling this to Councilman Baker last night, that South Fulton is better because we're here. And that list is a list of projects that we as residents and our constituents and residents have been asking the county to do for years, and they are finally getting done. So I, I, I'm just, I just wanna take a moment and say I'm very proud of all of you who is up here.
I'm gonna tear that.
Oh, no, you did.
Uh, Ms. Willis was, Ms. Willis was trying to get in, Ms. Rowell, but I think she couldn't get in.
So we gotta do the white.
So I just also wanna clarify, uh, for, wanted clarification to residents, because I know a lot of residents are looking confused and, and they hear the twenty-two million. Uh, and so, one of the things we've been doing for the past two years is, uh, operating and, and doing things, capital projects out of our operation budget. And according to our finance advisor, that's the wrong thing to do. Uh, we should be handling capital improvement projects out of our capital budget, and we should be doing bond financing. So this is a normal course of business, and, uh, this is what municipalities do. And if you look at other municipalities, they handle their capital projects out of their capital budgets. And so I would have to incur with, uh, Councilmember Khalid, the projects that we have identified, uh, went on, um, were ignored by our predecessor. Uh, they did not put any capital improvements in our facilities, because they knew we were going to become a city, and they wanted the onus to be on us. So we inherited a lot of issues in our parks and recreation facilities, and, uh, we have to, and in our fire stations. And, uh, now, we're doing what it takes to make sure we provide better services to our residents. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Rowell?
One of the things I wanna clarify, on page five, I wanna make sure that, um, you correct the Sand Bay Drive address. Sandtown Park's address is actually fifty-three twenty Hamilton Road, and adjacent parks are fifty-two eighty-four Hamilton Road.
Alright. Hearing no more from the queue, is this an action item?
Yeah, just clarification, well, on pages eight through ten, we'll, of course, it required that we have photographs of all eleven areas identified on pages five and six.
Madam President, is this an action item?
Yes, it is.
You have to set a meeting date?
Yeah, then we have to set a meeting date. Well, the first?
The first thing I would recommend is actually approving the, the plans of the.
So I move.
But can I say this, Councilwoman Miller mentioned Cedar Grove Road. The only thing on here, you guys can make sure you look at page five and six and see the projects. The page five and six are, pay, also page forty-three and forty-four.
Okay.
You mentioned, um, Cedar Grove Road, the only thing we have out here that I'm aware of for Cedar Grove is, uh, the fire station fifteen. I just wanted to make sure you guys heard that.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about something else, a building on Cedar Grove Road.
So you, if you want, if you want to have this for consideration of use of those funds for that purpose, and when we adopt this, we'll need to amend it to add the area.
You're right.
So we can amend it.
So she needs to amend it now, huh?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor.
Proud to the vote to that.
Correct.
Okay, so you have to add it, uh, amend it, yes.
I'm gonna need to add it now.
And you say I move, um, that we amend the U R A plan to include the, the property.
Can you, can you please?
Hold on, she has the floor, not that you, Ms. Glee has the floor.
I move that, uh, we, um, amend the U R A plan to include the building on Cedar Grove Road, ninety-two eighty-five Cedar Grove.
Second.
And that was ninety-two?
I think it's five.
Second. Is that the, oh, Phil Chinville? Uh, Mr. Baker was saying?
Well, you, we hit seconded, so it's a good discussion.
I'm sorry, you did second?
Yes.
Okay, then proper move to second, discussion.
I have a question, can you clarify what, where, you said a building on Cedar Grove, what building is that?
It's ninety-two eighty-five Cedar Grove.
It's ninety-two eighty-five Cedar Grove.
It's in the city of South Fulton?
It's ninety-two eighty-five Cedar Grove.
Okay, so I, I'm asking, is that, is that enough?
It's going to be.
So can we add something in our U R A that's not in our city at this current time?
You cannot do a capital improvement if it's not within the city of South Fulton. I read that, that's why I asked.
Can I amend it later? No, because we're moving along for the, for certain projects.
So you can amend it later if that territory comes to South Fulton, you can do that.
Okay, okay, then that's what.
Okay. Uh, let me get Mr. Baker. Excuse me, Ms. Baker, you would draw here.
Yeah, I will say my second.
Okay, good.
So now, I just was gonna, um, make a motion to approve the, uh, boundaries of the U R A, and actually to, who, who.
We have a motion, we're in discussion now.
Right. Yeah. I send it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Then, then, so that was.
Yeah, that's true, go ahead.
The recommended motion would be to approve the resolution, with consent to amend the map to make it consistent with the project list.
Like to make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, with consent to amend the map, uh, as previously stated.
Second. Proper move to second, discussion, Ms. Gilly.
So I guess my, um, I have a few questions, because I'm looking at the map, and of course, nothing is kinda jiving. So first, I guess for the chief, uh, the, uh, the fire chief, are these the most pressing fire stations that are in need of repair?
Chief, room where?
There he is in that. Amelia Cliftondale, um, is not in here, and I know we have discussed that as well, and that's not on here.
Is that what, what person, Cliftondale?
Cliftondale Park.
Cliftondale Park, okay.
So, so, yeah, first then, can we add Cliftondale Park to your motion?
We can, this motion is in the, uh, council.
It is.
Okay.
Accept it.
Your question to Ms. Gilly.
So I was just wondering, are these the most pressing fire stations out of all those fire stations that are in need of repair?
Uh, the list, that's, yes.
These are the most pressing, right here, okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Oh, Lord.
Got most of the round?
I'm done.
Okay.
And this is, and we're able to amend this, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, uh. I'll get to it. Uh, now, Ms. Rowell?
Yes, um, I had named it, so I move that we amend Sandtown Park to reflect fifty-three twenty Hamilton Road to fifty-two eighty-four Hamilton Road, because it wasn't in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, but I can just say that, I, I, I put language in all resolutions that if there's like a error or a technical or non-substitute that I can have that amended, so I'll just strike the addressed period, and then it'll be for the improvement of Sandtown Park and the Jason Park. And that's that five-two-eight-four.
But we're gonna add New Jason Park, so we probably need to do that to the, to the motion. He said that five-two-eight-four, which is, right, which is why.
Well, Mr. Baker would have to accept that.
Correct.
And, Mr. Baker, do you accept that?
Well, I mean, it's totally different motion, and nobody knows what that partial is. Just, nobody knows what that partial is, or how much, you know, we already have thirty million dollars.
So you answered it, though.
Yeah, no.
So we can do the first part.
We heard about the, the Sandtown, but.
So. So listen, like, Ms. Gilly just asked me, what is the time limit you have that you come back and make a amendment to? The time limit, if we, after the day, we don't have any other opportunity, right?
Yeah, today, well, you can amend, but I, I would, if you can finalize today, it's in the best interest of.
I got you. I got you, yeah.
But you can, you can vote on Baker's motion, and then if Councilwoman Rowell wants to have a, a substitute motion to follow what she proposed.
I do have concern, because we haven't done that to, to people in terms of not rejecting in their area. It's all part of the same, there's a park, an opportunity for parking, which is an issue.
But you can't put it in his motion, but it's, once his motion is voted on, you can make a, a, a motion to approve it.
Alright, anything else pertaining to Mr. Baker's motion? Alright, if not, all those in favor? Mr. Baker's motion.
And that is.
Alright, okay, that, that approved. Now, let me do this, Ms. Rowell, you're on, you're on, in the queue, did you wanna make a substitute motion?
Yes. Or is it?
A separate motion, I'm sorry, a separate motion.
Okay, my motion specifically deals with U R A for Sandtown Park, um, and rec center, again, because it's called together, uh, which the address for that is fifty-three twenty, and then Jason Park is fifty-two eighty-four.
Your motion is to?
To add, do the address correction, but add fifty-two eighty-four.
Okay.
So can I clarify, your motion would be to additionally amend the U R A expanded map and accompany the resolution to include fifty-three twenty and fifty-two eighty-four, and what is that street?
Hamilton Road, and they're right there, yeah.
Okay, that's the motion, can I get a second, is there a second, ma'am? Just for, yes, for a discussion. Um, what is the address of fifty-two eighty-four, that Sandtown Road?
No, right next to a parking lot, for a potential stand to the parking.
No, I'm just asking for the, the full address.
Fifty-two eighty-four Hamilton Road.
Hamilton.
They're both Hamilton Road.
Okay.
They're spread apart, but they're really not the way the park be curved around.
Is there a second? I'll say, okay, proper move to second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Now pass it. Alright, Ms. Gilly, uh, Ms. Gilly, go ahead, say, you gotta say.
So I'm gonna add Cedar Grove Park, and that is in the city.
That's, that's already on there, I think.
Where, I don't see that, I'm looking at.
No, no, it was just the, it was just the. It was just the, uh, the, the fire station. So yes, go ahead. Make your motion, is, is there a second?
I make a motion to add Cedar Grove Park to.
Second.
Proper move to second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, up, sorry, go ahead.
With the, with the budget we have, don't we, doing the U R A after the next, that we set priorities as far as the budget? As far as the projects? I mean, that's, I guess that's more so for me.
Right, in turn, yeah.
So we've not had a professional assessment, but in my opinion, based on aerial views, they give more projects than funds.
Right.
So you will have to meet as a U R A to establish priorities.
Right, so our second step after this will be to prioritize all of these projects that we're still adding to.
And you know, you can do it collectively, or you can say, we can agree that at least these three, we can move forward with, um, it's your discretion.
Okay, I just wanted to be.
Okay, that's clear, that's clear, uh, we have Mr. Khalid, and I got you, exactly, now you.
I, I, I do wanna support all my colleagues, but this is, you know, out of him, we've been working on this U R A list for months. And so we've had months, everyone's had months to like review this and submit it. We are at sixteen million dollars, we already have more projects than sixteen million dollars. So at this point, we are adding things to the list that aren't going to be funded. Um, yeah, so I, that, I just, I just want people to be kind.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give Ms. Jackson, and I'm gonna close out with Ms. Ms. Gilly.
Um, this is to you. So basically, if, I think you gave me another scenario, uh, if everything, if, if we prioritize, and everybody could not agree to that, then what we would do is split the monies, uh, equally. And then we would, because I'm sure everybody wants to do something in their area.
Yeah, that's your discretion.
Exactly, but I just wanted to make sure that was up there on the table.
That's, that's, yeah, that's an option.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm, Ms. Willis was trying to get in when I closed it out, so I'm gonna let you go, go, go to Ms. Willis.
I just wanna make the point that currently, on the map for, in District Four, there are five things that will never, um, meet the test. And I didn't know what these were put in here, because they were for infrastructure. So that's five things that are immediately coming on, and what I'm putting on is Cedar Grove Park. I just wanted to make that point.
Right. Okay, we'll close, we'll close.
I'm sorry, but we, we spent taxpayers' money, and we had a two-day retreat. And one of the days, we spent all day going through prioritizing this U R A, we had a presentation this U R A. I mean, we prioritized projects, and I have to agree with Mr., uh, with Councilmember Khalid. For us to keep adding stuff and, that we have not talked about, is ridiculous. We came to an agreement, we prioritized, we decided what we wanted to cover in the, in the U R A, and I'm not forced to put in anything even, because it may not take, um, I may not need, um, all the money. I mean, and I'm not looking at it as what's in my district, I'm looking at what's in the best interest of the city. And we have money to do something in Councilmembers', uh, uh, Gil Yard District, it's gonna benefit this whole city. So we gotta start, I mean, we can't help that certain facilities was put in certain areas of the city, we inherited that. So we need to bring our facilities that we have up to par, and then whatever we can do extra, do extra. No matter whose district this is.
I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor? All those in favor?
In favor, listen. Adding.
I took away five and put in one.
Adding her.
Adding Cedar Grove Park.
Yes, that's exactly what the motion is, right. All those in favor? All those in favor, that passes, okay, Madam President.
So that's the one in U R A?
Next item on the agenda is public comments.
Wait, I'm sorry. We did not vote on U R A. Uh, we did not set a meeting, weren't we supposed to set a meeting date for the U R A? Is that one of the three things you said that we needed to do?
That is correct, if you have to talk tonight, you can set a date for your first U R A meeting.
Ms. Glee, would you be, I mean, I was gonna have a staff, because the dates were being pulled out. Doesn't usually work, but I'm sure. Alright, let's do that. Okay, um, Madam President.
Public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking. The speakers may only address the presiding officer, shall observe all rules of the forum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the whole law. We have a total of six speakers for this evening, as I call your name, please line up at the podium. Ms. Barbara McKey, McKey, Mike Benal, Elizabeth Bartos, Glenda Collins, Eric Richardson, and Jill Lindsay.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Council, my name is Barbara McKey. I live at one-twenty Alcon Street, Industry Six. And I'm here tonight to say thank you, Council and Mayor, for the great job you're doing. You're doing. You're doing such a great job till I'm just overwhelmed, thank you, Ms. Willis, for that comment, everyone's working together. So why I'm here tonight is, I was a CEO of a company, and my employees worked best when they was compensating right. Now, we know there's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, and there's some things that I need my councilmen to do, and the rest of the council. When I invite investors to our city to invest, I need them to be available. I know you have other jobs, and I, I'm not here to fuss or fight or anything tonight, but I do ask that you kind of make yourself available. If I call and say, Ms. Willis, can you meet someone at nine o'clock, I do understand that you have, may have another job, I don't know. But I figured out you only makes about thirty-five dollars a day as being a council member. So I understand that some people, when I was supervising a CEO, they only gave me that amount of work, which I, I'm not saying that you interview do. But I think if you could approve a little bit more salary tonight, then maybe you could be available for me when I call you from nine to four, because that's usually when investors want to meet. Is that okay? So I'm asking maybe that you think about that, because thirty-five dollars a day, and you are on duty three hundred and sixty-five days a year, you might not be working every day. But I think in the back of your mind, you are thinking of set a soft each and every day, because I've seen the progress you've made, and I've seen the hard work that you put in. And it takes something to go out and put on, Ms. Willis, your little twen-, your twenty-twenty, not your little, but it takes a lot. So I'm asking you to think about all that tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Michael Benal, District Six, I look back at the South Golden Charter, we established a city manager who governs. When I hear people talking about their standing up cities and running cities, that is not the responsibility of Mayor and Council. There is an official city manager to do that job. When we talk about managing a hundred million dollar budget, we have a budget manager, a CFO, a treasurer, they do that work. Possi-, the responsibility of this council is to set policy. Doubling the compensation of a council in less than three years is unheard of. No, no one, that you can find any job that would do that. As the original charter was set up, people voted on the charter and the salary. If the salary needs to come back up, it needs to be placed on a ballot in the future, so that this whole city can vote on it like it should have been. This salary they proposed greatly exceeds all the surrounding salaries of Georgia in these cities of comparable size and comparable, um, finances, living expenses. Again, it is fraudulent to use government money to assist anybody in maintaining their residency, as residency was a requirement for you to run for office. Residents should not be responsible for paying folks Netflix bills, state debtors, high-speed internet and cable, and leaving their lights and air on twenty-four seven. You had to live here to be on a budget. Your desire should have been to serve, not to have a full-time job. Mr. Mayor, you need to dust off your veto pen. I agree that some changes need to be made, but the process and the extravagance that this proposal comes up, it led to be desired.
Good evening, uh, my name is Eric Richardson, uh, resident in, um, Council District Seven, and I'm coming to speak about the proposed, um, salary raise of the council. Uh, you know, uh, I think it's a great deal for anybody to step up and serve the city, but that's what we're talking about, serving. It's more of a voluntary thing, most people have a job, but they take it out of their time and their goodwill to serve the city. Now, if there was a study done to raise the salaries, I would suspect that the council would stay within a reasonable amount of money, you know, for those positions. Uh, as far as being available for investors, I believe we have folks in place to talk to those folks. So it is not a full-time job, although it is a full-time job. Because the expectations are that, you know, your constituents can meet you twenty-four seven, and we, we hold you to that. Uh, a modest raise is decent, uh, but, uh, a hundred percent, sad does, it doesn't even sound right. So, uh, if you reconsider something a little bit more reasonable, uh, I think, uh, we'd all be happy, but yeah, maybe so, it should be on the ballot. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mary Edwards and all of the council members, my name is Jill Lindsay, I'm in District Seven. I am adopted from the Cedar Road and Old National, and my concern tonight is, is phase two of the sidewalks, if it's included in the budget for twenty-twenty. And also, if the maintenance agreement for the sidewalks for phase one is being considered, it has not been maintained since it was, uh, built. And, uh, I have, I have emails and documentations asking about the maintenance of the sidewalks. The sidewalks are disappearing because of the weeds growing, they have not been maintained since they were built. So my concern is the Old National sidewalks, phase one and phase two, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Glenda Collins, Moon Creek Drive, Fairwood. Uh, thanks for all the education on the URA, but I do have some concerns. It appears though we have many things, and sixteen million five is not going to be enough, although we can go up to twenty. So we need to work that out, go back to the table, and work on that. And I would like to thank Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Jackson for the back-to-school badge, and all the volunteers that work hard in the heat. Thanks to the parents who hung in there with their children. Thanks to Mr. Phillips, Mr. Philpot, and Jacobs for coming out to help clean Mallory Road. However, Mr. Philpot, I would like for you to know that we need some help in cleaning it up on Fairwood. I really appreciated the audit presented tonight, and I look forward to having less findings and be in compliance with the next audit, thank you.
Betty Bartis, District Six, Short Road, Rivertown Road, called nine-one-one on Saturday, four-twenty in the afternoon, because I heard gunshots, weren't letting up, loud gunshots, not one or two. Pow, 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 TV volume way up, this is really disconcerting. Hasn't this country suffered enough from active shooters, and you see the public fear now shown on the news, crowds running for their lives because of any loud crashing noises? Nine-one-one dispatch wants to know the address of the emergency, told him it was behind my property, between two bad thoughts. Rivertown Road, hundreds of shots, police will have no trouble locating it by sound, now they just have to get there where it intersects with public road, nope, need my location, all my information. I'm supposed to identify the shooter's exact location, completely exasperating, I gave him two addresses on Rivertown Road. Sunday, exact same thing, all over again, supper time Sunday, stop grilling, run inside. Nine-one-one again, this time gave him addresses calling from my deck, so dispatch could hear the loud explosions, had to call twice, again, had to wait till they quit. After around two hours, again, went to the new police station on City Grove Road today. Get a report, nobody even came out to the entry area, I waited after signing in, eventually knocked on the door to the back, somebody came out, I explained, I need a report. See if a cop came to investigate and what they found, whether it was trespassing, illegal, licensed weapons, arrests, what? They could tell me nothing, they have no access to the reports, he said, because we have no ability to take in the money, you have to pay for them. I asked, what's the point of having a station here, he said, for recruitment and training, well, why doesn't have public sign into it if it can't help public? Had to drive almost ten miles then to the station at Old National Highway, report won't be ready for seven days, in the meantime, I picked up the one from the last time I called, and drove out to get a report made. The so-called report has my information on it, in other words, completely useless to me, I know what I called about, it doesn't even say police went out to look, or nothing. Here in the Sil- City of South Fulton, apparently, it's okay to deafen your neighbors with gunshots, as long as you're outside of the police. I started calling nine-one-one in October of twenty-seventeen, and complaining about our fear, anxiety, and noise every few months ever since. What happened to noise laws and public nuisance laws? Is the excuse that the police can't own somebody's property? Now I want to know if they gave them a license to have a firing range right behind us, again, nobody could give me that information. How does this affect the kids in Rivertown Mill neighborhood, the nearby Lakes at Cedar Grove neighborhood, encouraging everyone to go shoot up the neighborhood? We were talking about gangs and encouragement, well, we're in the city, this has to stop. Well, we're in the city. This has to stop.
Uh, I would encourage change this with the Dallas way, like I was. You first, I'm coming to give you something for, uh, for me and to talk about some of these. All right. Uh, Madam.
Next item is the approval of consent items, consent agenda items eight, nine. Eight, proclamations present, presented to family of Jacqueline King, Mayor Edwards. Nine, proclamation presented to Jacqueline King, Councilmember Colleen. Ten, proclamation presented to Latoy Myway, Councilmember Raul. Eleven, proclamation presented to Van Gieck Watkins, Councilmember Raul. Twelve, the following nominations for the Finance Committee. Councilmember Jackson nominates Winston Cook. Councilmember Gomes nominates herself and Kathy Adams. Councilmember Geyer nominates herself. Councilmember Colleen nominates Barbara McGee. Councilmember Willis nominates herself. Item number thirteen, council approval of two F, four F-150 trucks in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Count, item number fourteen, council approval of purchase of a cascade filling system from B and T Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Property move to second in discussion. Hearing none, all goes in favor. Uh, that passes.
Next item, previous agenda. Council request for approval to reschedule public hearing for M nineteen dash oh oh one. Modification request for two oh oh six Z oh oh four forty-two. The bluffs at Camp Creek, and it was approved on, it was rescheduled on two August the twenty-seventh.
I believe that we can, um, reschedule all three items. Um, modification, uh, M nineteen dash zero zero four. Modification, M nineteen dash zero zero one for the bluffs at Camp Creek. And then modification, M nineteen dash zero zero two, um, for Camp Creek Village Phase One.
Ooh, what time?
Um, and then modification, M eighteen dash zero zero one, Brian Creek at eleven oh two, the September, um, tenth meeting. That is the special meeting that, um, we were able to move those items to per the planner, the director of community development. So that will be held in March, uh, September the tenth.
That you're working.
That is my watch.
Yes, I'm.
Second.
Property move to second in discussion. Just, well, it's the colleague.
I didn't mean that that was a second.
No, no, no. Uh, is the, 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 the tenth is the second meeting, so is that?
Yes.
You want to do anything else here in the second?
Yes.
No, the tenth is the first meeting of September.
Yes.
I mean, it's the second Tuesday, not the fourth Tuesday.
Right.
Right, all right.
Right, yes.
Okay. Is it a straight move? Okay, uh, let's vote. Uh, the agenda. That passes. Madam.
Next item, number nineteen. Council reconsideration, consideration of ordinance twenty nineteen oh twenty, amending Title Eight Traffic and Vehicles, which was adopted on July twenty-third.
I would attend.
What? Okay. I am asking to approve the reconsideration for this ordinance. I am naming the ordinance, um, the Renai Major Speed Enforcement Camera Ordinance. And also, I need to add the language. Um, section eight, two-two zero zero four. The money collected and remitted to the city pursuant to the ordinance, including administrative and collection costs, shall be used by the city to fund local law enforcement and public safety initiatives. And this is in accordance and in compliance with state law.
Second.
Property move to second in discussion. Hearing none, all goes in, I'm sorry, in the discussion.
I want to thank Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Willis for naming after Renai Major. Um, you know, that was the young lady who lost her life in front of Sandtown. And, um, Councilwoman Jones worked with me to make sure we got a speeding beacon in front of that area, so I think it's really important and I appreciate the effort to recognize. Um, we need to make sure it is run as soon as possible.
Ms. Colleen, let me get back to your viewing.
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Willis.
You're very welcome. I've had several conversations with Mr. Major, who's Renai Major's custodial parent. Um, as, uh, it is very painful for him, but he was, he did meet with me. And, um, he did participate in the PSA video, um, that will be, um, that will be rolled out. Um, Ms. Renai Major was killed in front of Sandtown Middle School in a school zone. That's why this is so significant to, uh, name after her. And he wants his daughter's name to be used, um, as a memorial to, and also to remind others to slow down when they're going through school speed, when they're going through school zones. And we are rolling out speed enforcement cameras in all school zones. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All goes in favor? Any answers you have? Madam.
Next is item number twenty, council reconsideration of resolution twenty nineteen oh thirty-four. Approval moratorium banned. It was approved on July twenty-third. Councilmember Geyer.
So I just wanted, um, so I spoke with, um, our nominee director. Ms. Reed, could you come up? And one of her staff members contacted me and she wanted me to, uh, make sure that you guys were aware that with the moratorium that you approved at the last meeting, that it didn't exclude variances and rezonings for these specified items. Um, so we were just wondering if it was the intent to exclude those. And if it was the intent, then I would add that. And if it wasn't the intent, then you can just leave it at.
That was not the intent.
Okay.
Excuse us, Ms. Gettys.
So the second issue was, um, Councilwoman Geyer. And I put your item in the agenda, Councilwoman Geyer. You did mention also, is in addition to the CDP, that you wanted to do some type of modifications.
Yeah, modifications. I wanted, um, modifications to be excluded from the moratorium.
And do you understand the capacity that you refer to?
So I can be, but you can clarify.
Well, no, I was asking you, because I'm, I'm not, I didn't speak to her in detail, so I want to make sure that you're aware as far as the management. So can you, can you elaborate so Ms. Reed can comment, so we can make sure that we incorporate what you intended?
Um, I have a subdivision that has one home left. And they cannot finish building the, that home because the topography will not allow the garage, um, to be where it originally was composed. So it needs to lean to the front instead of leaning on the side or the back. And that's a modification in order for it to be approved. And I'm sure that there are other modifications that are not, you know, very impassable. So I want to make sure that modifications are excluded in the moratorium that I currently have that I think expires on September the eighteenth.
So modifications, I'm sorry, modifications are just as rezonations necessarily, because modifications are changing of a condition that was placed inside of the zone. So they're pretty much the same thing. Yes, ma'am.
So, so if, if I, well, this is, yeah, we too, not, not.
So Councilwoman, you don't have, you don't have a moratorium in place. I just want to let you know that. The only thing that's in place is the moratorium that you approved collectively in the council at your last regular meeting. And that moratorium canceled all prior moratoriums.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So that was the point of the CDP language, of us adding that to this.
Yeah. Oh, so, so I, I really, because it was a separate one, I thought, for specific items and only those specifics. So I thought that was a completely and totally separate moratorium.
No, that moratorium is gone. So the only thing is the collective moratorium that the council adopted at the last regular meeting, subject to being amended and on the sheet today. And if you'd like to exclude modifications, it sounds like you're asking the council to exclude modifications from the moratorium. Is that the request, or I just want to make sure that whatever I do was consistent with what he intended today?
I'm, I'm actually a bit.
So I, I'm, I'm not certain as to if I understand, because I'm under the impression that the uses that we identified in the last change, those were uses that did not include the residential location, or residential use, shall I say. So that piece would not pertain to this, um, if you see what I'm saying. You're, we identified a list of uses that would be prohibited from coming into the city for construction or being licensed. Residential was not one of those, so that, that would still be able to move forward, even with the moratorium that was in place.
So I was under the impression, A, that the residue, that the moratorium that I had that ended in September the eighteenth was still in place. That's number one. I did not know that this separate moratorium for all of these different uses knocked that out. I did not know that, because it were, really, it was to me not connected whatsoever. So then, the modific, when I found out about the garage, I did not know that it was a modification. And the modification would be a rezoning, which to me sounds like something totally.
Sure, ma'am, may, may I have a little time with you to discuss this?
Yeah.
And then we can bring this back to that, um, issue that we have.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I want to hold that.
Well, your, your ability under our rules to do a motion for reconsideration is the next meeting. So if you bring it back after that, then it will be a new item.
Well.
So is it possible to table and then we can discuss some?
I think that's what we said, eight oh, private table.
Well, when I say table, I mean, it's a later tonight, not.
Right. Or a room. Right now.
During the rolling, sketch it out.
Correct, if that's possible.
All right.
Yes, could we do that?
Okay. Let's do that.
Hey, isn't that a little better?
Okay, go over there. Madam. They're going to talk about, like, they'll be, they'll table and come back. Let me get, uh, the one that you have already done. Okay, uh, Ms. Colleen, go ahead.
Um, I just want to save the interest of time, uh, because we still have an executive session. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that tonight.
Oh, we have to do executive session.
No, no, no. Go ahead, Ms. Colleen.
Yeah, so, so to be clear, I understand that we have an executive session and we have some more to do, go do. I also think that there may be some lack of clarity around what Councilwoman Geyer is trying to do. So the moratorium, so I just want to reiterate that for Councilwoman Geyer, that the moratorium that is in place only covers light uses on commercial properties. There is no moratorium for residential properties. So I'm not sure that it would even be appropriate to tag on residential property moratoriums to a commercial property moratorium. We could just wait, come back at another meeting and have a moratorium around residential properties, if that's something that we need to do. I don't, I definitely, I definitely do not want to mess with the moratorium that we have for commercial properties. I do not want to open that one up for modifications. So if modifications need to be made on residential properties, that needs to be a separate, uh, resolution. I am not opening up, I, it is not my wish to open up our current moratorium for modifications on commercial properties.
I hear what you're saying, but you should, you don't have to handle that.
Well, it's just the collective will of the council, so it would mean that, you know, you would vote that down as far as your vote and then, but Councilwoman Geyer would have it, they need to do a, a motion for reconsideration tonight to raise the issue.
I, I hear that, but, but it's, it, it, what I, what I'm hearing is that she wants reconsideration for residential properties. So we don't need to tamper with modifications for commercial properties.
Well, it sounds like she may no longer be interested in the residential modification based on Ms. Reed's advisement.
No, 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 no. I do not want to do anything.
My control, my, my control is on.
I don't want to do anything to attach to your resolution. That's not what I'm attempting to do. First, I'm, I'm attempting to get some clarity in terms of maybe it's not working.
It is working, you're not speaking.
So, so, so what I'm trying to do is to get some clarity from, um, Ms. Reed in terms of where I really am and where I'm really not. I didn't even know my, my, um, I didn't know that my resolution was not even in effect since it was residential, and I don't see how the commercial knocked out the residential. I don't understand that. But I need to go to her, since she is the director, and tell me exactly where I am. So that's what I'm getting ready to do. And I'm not trying to change anything that you have.
Right, and so.
I want to make that clear.
Right, and so what I'm saying is a matter of procedure. If you're not trying to change what we have, that's not a reconsideration, and it's not a minimum. That's a new resolution. So we don't need to table or hold. We need to make a new resolution.
Yes, that's correct. If, if you're not going to add to the one that was previously adopted, then you can just bring back a new moratorium in the next meeting.
You still get to talk to her. I think they're right. Uh, you have to bring something back.
Right.
Okay, that's good. We had no need to make. Yeah, we didn't get to talk about it. Okay, Madam.
Item number twenty-two. Council's final approval and adoption of amending ordinance twenty seventeen oh one oh oh one, section two, point one, for compensation and expenses for council.
Doctor, I'm with this council. Second, quiet. I made a motion to approve that.
Second.
The property move to second in discussion.
That's the discussion.
You have a discussion?
Yes.
Go right here.
I think the language in there, um, should specifically not address living expenses, but deal with transportation, because of transportation reliance or spike.
Are you trying to eliminate the word?
That's, that's, uh, page one fifty-six, section one-three-zero-one-oh. It's three sixty-four, three sixty-four monthly transportation spike. Um, and I want to address that because, you know, we had comments about all these utilities. That's not what this is. It was for transportation purposes. It is, it's not addressed in this ordinance, but comments were made, so I want to speak. It is a transportation laws, which is customary, which you see with city council people. So I want to clarify that language. Not to say monthly living expenses, but transportation spikes.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Willis.
Can you please, uh, Attorney Walker, clarify, uh, because this council, um, has been under attack by a few people stating that we're doing something illegal against state statutes, against the law. Um, I would like for you to please provide some narrative. I know you responded to one individual who publicly put out that the council is doing something unlawfully, doing something against state laws, doing something against, um, policy. Can you please, for the sake of clarification and for the record and for the recording, um, speak on that?
Yeah, so I can clarify. I have seen an argument that has gone out. Um, it, it has not, it has not been supported by any case law or any judicial tribunal or decision, but it, but it has been something that I have seen at least, um, three citizens put out there about the public hearing requirement. The statutory provision that you're operating under requires you to have three public hearings. The argument that I've seen has been that the public hearing has to occur before you take action, in the sense that it has to occur before you do anything. So under that interpretation, you could, uh, tomorrow, you could say, uh, we're going to take action three years from now to increase salaries. And then, three years from now, because you gave that notice that you're going to do it in three years, you could then do it without giving the public notice. Um, so to me, that interpretation was just odd. It was weird. Um, I don't know where it came from. It's not a practice that's used or employed by cities across the, the state of Georgia. The action that is intended under that statute is the formal action of you actually implementing that increase. You, based on the process that you have followed, tonight, if you affirmatively vote to approve the increase, you will be taking action to put this in effect. And the state law requires, before you take that action, before you make an affirmative vote that's going to increase your salaries, that you have to publish notice so that the council can address you the three meetings immediately before you take that substantial step. And publication has gone out, it went out last week, it went out the week before that, and it went out the week before that. Um, I provided, uh, receipts of that publication to the, um, party who sent an email, um, just as a courtesy, because there was some misinformation that was put out there along with, with other information. But, um, there are several council increases that are going on right now. The city of Powder Springs, um, the city of Lawrenceville, Warner Robbins. Um, if you actually took some time to Google and research, there are, uh, cities across the state who are amending their, their council salaries. I haven't seen as much response. I don't know what's so interesting about South Fulton, that you guys have gotten so much heat for this issue, but, um, you're not doing anything that other city councils, um, are collectively doing across the state and have done.
Um, the other thing, isn't it true that Georgia has five hundred and thirty-eight cities, Mr., uh, Attorney Walker? Uh, and isn't it true, is it, have you ever seen, out of the five hundred and thirty-eight cities, and as long as you're in the practice, uh, working for municipalities, has any city ever voted on their council to get salary increases?
Has any city ever voted?
Has any city put it on the ballot for their residents to vote on, on salary increases?
No, and I can tell you why. And that's because there is a statutory process for this increase to be implemented, and there is just no process for that to be done by referendum. The Home rule charter that regulates this increase says you do X on Z, and that's what cities do, so you're basically following the only option that the state legislature gave you. Um, there is room to lobby for this to be a potential referendum item, but until that happens, um, cities have learned to be orders when you follow the statutory process.
All right, lastly, isn't it true that, um, we did a pay and compensation study of the salary that we are proposing to raise our salaries to? Well, falls within, actually, it falls, uh, below the range that the, uh, study came back and recommended for us to increase our salaries to?
That, that is my understanding. Um, I, I do know that you procured to have that type of analysis done before you took that action. I can tell you that looking at, um, pay across the state, um, there are a lot of cities who it's a lot higher than you. There are cities that are very slower than you, so, um.
Um, isn't it true that, uh, the pay and compensation study was done because when the original presentation was done by the company that was hired to review the pay and compensation that came back, that city of South Fulton was really, uh, below, um, the, considerably very low compared to other cities outside, uh, for council and pay salaries?
I don't want to quote the study for evidence, because I, I don't have that will and regulation that everybody can.
Mr. Donner, did you share this study on our, um, isn't this publicized? I know I shared it in my newsletter, and I also shared the memo that came back as it relates to, uh, council salary. So I just want, I'm just clarifying this, because I want people to go back and read it for themselves, so they won't think that we pulled this number out of the scot.
So it has not been shared online, but if that is the will of the council, we can easily do that.
Okay, thank you. Could you please share, along with the memo, uh, with the range of what they recommend our salaries should be, which is below, which is within, we are within the range. We didn't even max out to what you said we should be.
Yes, ma'am, we'll share it.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Any further, Ms., any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let's vote. All goes in favor? Is that five to two?
Yes.
Your nose goes to Ms. Gereyad and to, uh, Ms. Gomes. I'm sorry, your nose goes to Ms. Gereyad and Ms. Gomes. Uh, let me just say this. Five to, someone said about vetoing. Five to on, on, on veto, just be ceremony. Uh, secondly, I do say this. I don't have a vote. But if I had one, I'd be with Gomes and Gereyad. I just want to make that clear. You know, I've beaten nobody, and it's my opinion.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to know that. All right? Next, Ms. Reed.
Next item on the agenda is item number fifteen. Council approval to authorize city manager to enter to agreement with Perez Planning and Design LLC for the development of a park recreation trail and open space master plan.
Okay, that's, uh, Arthur Redd. Go right ahead, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, this is, before you this evening, pursuant to the presentation that was given at the recent retreat, uh, with the mayor and council. Mr. Perez presented an overview of their process. They are the recommended vendors. Kerr is not here this evening, but we managed the procurement process, and we are now presenting this for council consideration.
It's under the consent, item number fifteen.
Fifteen, Ms. Gomes. Are we, are we straight now?
No.
What is?
I thought this was on the consent.
I will pull off.
It was pulled off of the consent.
It goes out to consent. Go right here.
So we are presenting this this evening. Again, this is pursuant to the recent presentation made by council and mayor, uh, at the recent retreat. And this is the recommended vendor from our human process managed by finance, uh, and Mr. Adam Kerr. And they were the, uh, most responsive bid and are recommended to mayor and council for consideration.
I move that we, uh, can we?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
I move that we approve this, um, recommendation, um, to move forward with the, uh, park master plan.
Second, property move to second discussion, Ms. Gereyad.
I don't have any problem with that, but I do, the reason why I approved it is because. I don't have any problem with that, but I do, the reason why I approved it is because, um, at the bottom of page seventy-six, it says, "The fee, as con- as consideration for the services city of South Fulton shall be to the contract with the fee described in exhibit B attached here too and incorporated herein in this reference." There is no exhibit B in the package. So, this would be another time that we will be voting on a document where there is no fee schedule and there is no renown, there is no out.
Total amount.
That's why I told you.
Didn't you already present the total amount?
Yes. So, I, council, I want to, excuse me, you want to add some questions on this, on this, Matt, do you want to add some questions?
No, he's gonna answer. I mean, it's pretty simple.
So, we have worked with, by Mr. Kerr in that regard, and he has worked with our selected vendor. The procurement amount of this effort is two hundred thousand dollars.
I think the reminder, what would probably be helpful to refresh the memory is that at the, uh, at the retreat, the presentation, the gentleman had asked for about two hundred and forty thousand, but we, uh, committed to negotiate that price down. Since that time, they've negotiated it down to the two hundred thousand, which is the approval that Mr. Phillips is requesting. So, those original documents that you saw don't change, they're still the same, but the dollar amount has now changed. And so, once you approve the doll, the new lower dollar amount, they'll create the addendum.
And I really have no problem with that.
No, understood.
It's just that, that information should be in the document, and it was not in there. And even more so now that it's reduced.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was, that was the only piece of my vote.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Matt, first?
Next item, council approval resolution authorizing city manager to procure traffic camera enforcement vendor.
I move that we approve, uh, city manager to, uh, approve traffic, uh, camera enforcement vendor.
I remove the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Matt, first?
Next item, council approval resolution requesting official recognition of the city of South Fulton by the United States Postal Service. Ms. Jackson, I'm Councilmember Jackson.
Um, I move to approve the resolution for the city of South Fulton to ensure that we have efficient and expeditions processing of our mail, getting our own zip code for the city of South Fulton.
Second. The poppy move is second. End discussion. Hearing none?
Hearing none.
Okay, any, Ms. Wood, Ms. Wood, go ahead.
Um, I, I thank you very much for doing this, and I just want full transparency. Um, I met with Congressman Scott one month ago, um, concerning this issue, and I do have a thoughtful, we desire well forward to the entire council, um, what comes out of that issue.
Okay. All right, let's vote. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Matt, first?
Next item, council approval resolution opposing migrant detention centers.
All right, okay.
I, well, I guess, I'll make the motion to approve resolution, uh, or it doesn't have enough, the resolution, um, opposing the migrant detention centers within the city of South Fulton.
I remove the second in discussion. Hearing none? You understand? Ms. Gillyard, clear discussion?
I'm the only, the only discussion that I have is that I think that it's really a little awful, and I think that most people that are really, really concerned about, uh, that most people that are really, really concerned about, um, people, especially children, I'm sure they feel the same way. This is very dear to us, um, and something that we're not going to participate in as a city. We're not going to treat people like anything less than human. I just think it's terrible.
Ms. Perez?
Yes, I just want to give some context around this. I was, I was taken back and appalled when Councilmember Gunn, because when I saw this, I was like, what are you doing? We don't have detention centers in the city of South Fulton. And she sent me an article, uh, and the article stated that they are looking, uh, to place, build a facility south of I twenty, uh, in the South Fulton area to hold, uh, refugees, and, uh, and I hope if they come anywhere near South Fulton, I will hope that he will stay with this council and protest, protest that action, I won't say what I want to say, but protest that action, because that is not something that we want associated with our region, let alone our city. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gunn and Ms. Gillyard.
And I, and I just want to say that the interns that work in the office of District Two, this was one of their projects, so they pulled the language, which I thought was really dopey dumb because they're young and just being really, shouldn't have said dope. I just thought it was really good for them to experience, just trying to, you know, hear their voice and advocate for themselves, so I, I think that's...
Very good. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Matt, first?
Council first reading of ordinance reducing single plastic uses. Councilmember Gunn.
Okay, so this is definitely, um, one of my babies. Um, I have been pushing this even before probably some of you all started hearing what was going on with the city of Atlanta and them, uh, doing, uh, plastic single bag use. Um, I looked at a couple of cities. I looked at Washington DC and mainly, um, the, the city of New York. And what I found is that a lot of the trash that we see on the side of the road is hard for it to break down. You see that they're from a lot of our restaurants. Um, every time you go out, you have, um, styrofoam cups and, and plates, but that's really detrimental to the environment. And I think also too, with kind of putting some bans on it with this, will help curb some of the, um, the trash and the litter and debris that we see in our communities. Um, this is kind of a progressive step for the city of South Fulton because we'll probably be one of the, probably the first cities to kind of move through this process. Um, also too, there's a, a phone ban in here as well. So, those white plastic cups, uh, we're really focusing on our, uh, city facilities first, and then we're moving into, uh, businesses and restaurants. I don't know if any of you, um, or businesses that are in the city of South Fulton are familiar. Uh, Red Lobster, all of those places are now going to those cardboard straws where they're able to break down more, and then also too, they're not using the styrofoam. Um, so it's kind of a phase in, um, process, and I'm also thinking about adding amendment, but I'm trying to get some clarity on that through our city attorney, but that's more to come, but that's what this plastic, single plastic use is.
I got to do this, Ms. Gunn.
Yes, yes. That's just going to the environment, short glasses around me.
Okay, uh, it's been brought to move the second.
No, it's the first read.
Or the first read? I'm sorry. Next, mister.
Next, item number twenty-seven, council first read of ordinance amending Title One, Chapter Four, elections for the city of South Fulton.
Dr. Robb?
Uh, this is the first read as well, but it really seeks to make it, um, very transparent, um, how we hold our election center in the city of South Fulton. Uh, when we were first incorporated, we adopted series, uh, sections that deal with it, but it really didn't flow, so, um, I worked with, um, our city attorney to try to outline all the steps in the process. We're actually going to come back with a, a slight amendment for the second read. We talked about it a little bit more today, and so, um, uh, based on what we see what happened with, uh, neighboring municipalities around elections issues and qualifications, so, um, you'll be seeing some, um, information before it comes back, I guess, at the separate, Septem- September tenth is the next regular scheduled meeting scheduled.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, um, council member, uh, Grau, I would like to see some type of language, because what I don't want to happen is what I see our neighbor city going through. That is totally embarrassing, and I don't, you know, we do need to do our due diligence around qualification, and we don't need to try to, we need to avoid trying to go in. I mean, I know state law, uh, allows it, but on this level, if we can avoid going through what our neighbor city is going through, and we can do some due diligence upfront, even if it requires a signature on qualification for, um, you know, for a process, I, I really would like that incorporated into it. Thank you.
Okay. Matt, first?
Next item is the approval of the bear cat vehicles.
So, Mr. Malazie, can you come up, please, and explain, um, Mr. Malazie is saying that we need to hold off on the approval, and that's the budget would need to be amended before we approve the bear cat. Can you explain?
So, the...
I asked Mr. Malazie to explain.
The cost of the bear hat, the four hundred thousand is not in our budget. It was requested to be in the twenty twenty, having seen the need, it was, because in twenty twenty, there was no funding. We tried to move it into twenty nineteen, so this is what is going to happen. The savings that PD is talking about, so you may have savings in PD, you may have no savings in the parks, you may have some savings in the op- uh, operations in another department. All of those savings at the end of the fiscal year, if we have more savings, that means we add more revenue to cover, um, uh, our expenses. Those, if there are a lot of savings, we throw those savings into, uh, offsetting fund balance. If we don't have savings, then we end up in having additional negative of fund balance. So, as we close the fiscal year, we, unless we have something that will go where, where we expect, that that four hundred thousand, we are likely to get it, not only from PD, as I said. PD, they may have savings, other departments may not have those savings. So, af- after the fifteenth of September, I'll come to the council to recommend the amending and providing that amount of money for PD to buy. Now, you cannot approve it because there's no funding as of now.
Okay, so my question to you is, when you met with the city manager, you met with the chief of police?
Yes, ma'am.
And to my understanding, there was an understanding that this could be done with an amended fiscal nineteen budget.
It is nineteen. The one I'm talking about is nineteen. We, we are going to amend the nineteen before we close it, before the thirtieth of September.
Again, but when you met with me, I mean, when you met with, um, the chief of police, you met with Mr. Tom, to me, there was an understanding that funding was there for the fiscal nineteen budget.
It's still the same. I've explained the year, the funding will be as we close, and I'll come to the council to, uh, to recommend the use of that money. So, once you approve that one, then they'll have the funding, they can go and have and buy.
So, is there a time sensitive, uh, is this time sensitive? Can this wait until September?
It's still September, because they were requesting this in twenty twenty. Their request was for twenty twenty, it was not for twenty nineteen.
So, you're saying that September, the next council meeting, regular council meeting in September, you will be prepared to bring back a recommendation for us to amend the budget to approve this bear cat?
Yes, ma'am, after the fifteenth. So, it will be in your final, uh, in our second day council meeting of September.
So, accounting is based off of projections and forecasts?
Exactly.
So, do you project, you forecast it's going to be in a savings to purchase this? Because it's so good, we should be talking about this.
That's the only way out we can try to go, and then you...
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I guess I, uh, the motion to hold this, because that's the will of the body.
So, I move, I move, I move to hold this until the next regular council meeting, uh, to approve based on Mr. Malazie's recommendation. When is the next regular council meeting?
Can you say the second day meeting in September?
So, when do you plan on as a minute of budget?
So, it will be after the fifteenth of September.
She needs a date that we can take a final look at.
Second council meeting in September.
So, I move that we bring this forward to the second council meeting in September, and that will be, uh, September twenty-four, the day after my birthday.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Poppy, move the second in for the discussion. Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I think I made my position to this pretty clear. Uh, we cannot police our way to prosperity. Alpharetta and Sandy Springs, they are landing, uh, corporate headquarters every day. I promise you that when they are pitching to Newell Rubbermaid or Mercedes Benz, they are not showing off their military vehicles. Um, if you look at our current budget, forty-six percent of it is spent on public safety. That's nearly fifty cents out of every tax dollar. So, uh, the first thing that I would like, Mr. Malazie, is to break that out between the lease and fire. I think we're probably spending a third of all of our tax dollars on police. Uh, the second thing that I would like for you to take a look at is that we heard during the presentation today that the, um, police have already seized two hundred thousand dollars in goods and make out three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar Lamborghini that they're selling. So, they have five hundred thousand dollars in, uh, funds that they've gotten from, um, you know, illicit, you know, illicit activities. I think they have enough to cover their whole bear cat without taking any more of our tax dollars. We just learned today that all of the projects that we want to do, the sidewalks, the mold in our, in our, our buildings, the mold of whatever we have on our fire stations, we don't have money to do all of that. So, uh, I just don't want us to spend any more of our tax dollars trying to police our way to prosperity.
I can't. I can't do it. We get to vote for example. And to not get, not side with the police department and give them something that they need to protect and to serve. It's asinine, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, as a point of view, that, uh, I think we have something about cursing that we don't, we don't allow that.
I have, asinine is not a curse word. Not in War House. Now, so I'm just saying that we got to put priorities. You know, our police department is just not working by policing. This man right now is soliciting funds for a PAL program. He just bought a bus so he can take children around in the PAL program. He and I are discussing a trip program for the point six. We're discussing children's curfew, and we cannot give him what they need to protect When he just up there told me, he just bought two machine guns off the street? Let you face a machine gun, you better have your tank too. I'm just, that's it for me. I already...
Um, I agree. We need to, uh, do what it takes to protect, I mean, for our officers to have what they need to protect us. And we say public safety is priority in the city, and we need to give them the tools of, uh, to do whatever they need to do. So, the motion, um, uh, pro temp is on the table. Uh, we have, um, you know, this is a discussion, I'm ready to vote.
Uh, I have another, I can speak to me. Um, when, when, uh, Councilman Gillian, um, do you need to keep for this discussion? Okay, uh, I just want to ask some clarifying questions from, uh, Mr. Malazie. Could you come up to the mic, please? Because our salary increase was brought up. First, I want to say that we went to a retreat, and we made a promise to one another that if we disagreed about something, that we would speak out against it, and I made up that promise. Next, I want to ask, our salary increase will be twenty-seven thousand dollars, is that what we're talking about?
It's coming from up to twenty-seven, yes.
It's coming up to twenty-seven. What is the starting salary for our police officers?
I think it's a.
It's fifty thousand dollars. What is our police chief's starting salary? Uh, what is his salary? Because we're talking about salaries. What is his salary?
He's a contract.
What is it? How much, how much do we pay our police chief a year? How much do we pay him?
Hundred and fifty.
We pay him a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're paying our police officers fifty thousand dollars and we're paying our, uh, police chief a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I don't appreciate someone trying to drag my salary into a discussion about police. I certainly care about police. The machine guns were bought from Old National. I live on Old National. I grew up there. I didn't move away. And having a tank roll down my street doesn't make me feel safer. Fulton County has a tank. They have five hundred thousand dollars. They can buy it out of their own budget. Uh, and so I just, again, for the record, I don't, I don't appreciate our break, us breaking our commitment to one another. I don't appreciate my salary being dragged in a discussion about police. It, it, it's tattling. I'm not going to curse. It's tattling. And I don't appreciate it.
Let's go.
The motion on the floor is to hold it until September twenty-first.
That passes.
Next item.
Next item. Next item.
Next item is to approve to cancel the August twenty-seventh meeting.
I make a motion to approve that we cancel the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen council meeting, work session.
I say second.
Can we vote?
Is it second, the second in the screen?
Yeah.
Alright, it's probably move the second. Uh, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. Madam President.
Next on the agenda is the city manager's report.
These items are probably more appropriate for, uh, executive session, so I would prefer to hold until that time.
Next item, next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
She probably has the same.
Yeah, I have the same announcement as the manager.
I'll take a motion to approve this executive session.
I make a motion to go on executive session, city is fast lethal.
No.
Legal real estate. Legal personnel and real estate.
Let's go. Alright, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I have to review the discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I would like for us to go into executive session, not to receive that opinion.
Second.
Wait until what?
Not till seat eleven.
Oh.
Okay, that's good, that's clear. Thank you. All those in favor?
That'll be eight to eleven, you're all. I make a motion to close executive session.
No, I think we have to close that. We have to reconvene.
I make a motion to reconvene.
Next executive session.
Second.
I'll move the second to reconvene. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, Madam President. What the city do, have you made in the executive session?
So I actually have recommendations for the motions. I think if I, if I say them, maybe that'd help expedite the process.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, I will.
You want to take a vote of what?
So mayor, I would, I would ask that, um, we table the executive session motion until after the, um, I would ask that we amend the agenda to allow for the adoption of two municipal court ordinances and that we table the approval of the executive session item until after the adoption of those items.
I make a motion to do a spoken.
Second.
I'll move the second. Uh, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, madam.
So I am handing the city clerk a document that is a, an emergency ordinance of, um, the, the city of South Fulton amending, um, Title Seven Municipal Courts. And the request would be for a motion to approve the emergency ordinance. Um, this document has been circulated prior to the council by email. The, uh, nature of the emergency is on the ordinance, but in sum, it's just to ensure the smooth operation and continuity of the court. The request would be that we amend, however, this emergency ordinance to include a position that is titled the Chief Pro Temp. And the chief pro temp would have all authority in the instances of a vacancy of the chief judge to exercise the authority of the chief judge.
I make a motion to do this spoken. I'll move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, Madam President.
The second request would be to allow a duplicate of the ordinance, of the emergency ordinance that was just adopted to be considered for first read so that you can have a final adoption of this item, um, at your discretion at your next meeting.
Second. I make a motion to do this spoken. You second. I'll move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
And mayor, we will, uh, now go to the executive session i- item that we tabled earlier. And the motion is for the, um, would be request for the council to approve an agreement appointing Attorney Fannie Willis as the chief pro temp judge of the South Fulton Municipal Court, subject to the agreement that was presented before the council being modified to state that the initial payment for the first month will start from the fifteenth of the month and be prorated based upon the remainder of the days in the month from the amount of the monthly contract amount. That the agreement will terminate at the city's discretion upon an order that is unfavorable, unfavorable to the city in pending litigation. To also modify it to where the agreement will run for, um, a temporary ninety-day term to automatically renew through the term of the current mayor.
I'd like to make. I'd like to make a motion to approve. To approve the judge.
Okay. You second.
Second.
I'll move the second in this discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
And the final, um, motion would be request to amend the, to further amend the agenda to allow the mayor to swear in our new judge appointee.
Police?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Probably move.
Discussion.
You got discussion.
We have, uh, we have another.
They have already authorized you to execute it.
Yes.
We have publicly.
This is the, uh, lease.
Yeah, you don't have to. You've already approved him, you've already given him the authority to execute. He as a courtesy has been, um, has agreed to you guys that he will stand by for further comment. But he has authority to execute at this point. You don't need a new motion.
Got it, okay. And so would it be appropriate, mayor, for me to highlight what's happening with that, um, lease for the benefit of the public? So, uh, as.
Actually, before we go there, we still need the motion to amend the agenda to include the discussion on this topic.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the discussion about the.
Public safety lease.
Public safety lease.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, go right ahead.
Just very quickly, uh, about a month or so ago, the council approved, uh, the city, uh, to move forward with, uh, an agreement or to negotiate and complete an agreement, uh, to move the, uh, public safety center and what is now the police headquarters, uh, to what is commonly known as the Old Ingalls, uh, building. We have come to an agreement on that. Um, I think the total lease, uh, is approximately, uh, eighteen thousand dollars. We've included all of the CAM charges and the initial, uh, improvements that allow the city to then, uh, bring it forward. You've also approved the total amount of those improvements through the budget modification. So today's notification is that we are good to go, uh, pending, uh, the allocation of funding, uh, through the treasurer's office. And so we will be moving forward, uh, at some point, we believe, within the next thirty to sixty days. Uh, but we'll be executing the lease that has been presented to you through other channels. And so just wanted to highlight that and, uh, I guess congratulations on, uh, soon we should be moving forward on this public safety center.
Okay, thank you. Agree. Do you need a motion to do Fanny's?
Yes, and then the final request will be a motion to swear in our new judge appointee.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, swear in, uh, new chief.
Chief judge appointee.
I'll move the second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
That wasn't unanimous, you know? Okay, I'm sorry.
It wasn't?
It was.
Yeah.
No, I was, I didn't raise my hand. I felt it like it's.
Congratulations, fine.
Thank you.
Repeat after me. I, Fannie Willis.
I, Fannie Willis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of chief pro temp judge.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the chief pro temp judge.
Of this city.
Of this city.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
And defend the charter.
And defend the charter.
Yeah, charter thereof as well as.
Thereof, as well as.
The constitution.
The constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That's it.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I'd like to make a motion.
Did we close this executive session? We did close this executive session. I said, sorry. Alright, probably move the second. In discussion, all in favor? Alright, see you later.